Welcome, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the Zoning Board, Nashua, City of Nashua, Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting for September 24th, 2024. My name is Rob Shaw. I'm the Chair of the Zoning Board. I will go through a little bit of introductory remarks, talk a little bit about how we conduct the meeting, try to keep it fairly brief. We have only one kind of case in front of us tonight, and I'll go through that. I'll, we'll do a roll call. I'll introduce the members of the zoning board, and again, hopefully get through that business fairly quickly. The zoning board is comprised of individuals here who live in the city, who've been appointed by the mayor and approved by the Board of Aldermen. We are basically called upon to act as a quasi-judicial body to provide judgments on relief from land use code requests. And there's a couple primary ones that are variances and special exceptions. We only have variances in front of us tonight, so I'll only talk about a little bit on the specifics of those kinds of cases in a minute or so. But we use many land use laws and codes that are documented in the city codes, as well as additional requirements that are governed by the state RSAs. So we basically take testimony where a owner of property wishes to do something that is not directly allowed by code. So again, I noted, we have variances before us tonight, so I'll only talk about how we handle those. There's basically five criteria that we are looking forward to be met. Those of you that are presenting should already be familiar with those criteria because they are part of the written application that would have already been submitted for your cases. And we will ultimately speak to those when we make our decision regarding the request. We do always strive to and pretty much are able to at least act on the cases before us on a given evening. Just pardon me, I need to take a sip of water. Most of the time, we do just render a decision at the time of this meeting. Sometimes we will table a case if there's compelling reason to, or maybe additional information is needed, or even some discussion sometimes with the applicant and other involved parties. So that's just a little bit about what happens there. The specific logistics are, we ask the applicant to come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. We actually ask for anybody that's ultimately giving testimony to always speak into the microphone and name and address at the beginning of any testimony. The applicant has up to 15 minutes to talk about what they're trying to do and why they're trying to do that, and this is the beginning part of what we call the public hearing. Then we seek to see if there's any additional testimony that anybody in support wishes to provide. Those individuals will have up to five minutes for their testimony, and then after that, we ask if there's anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to come forward. Same procedure, they have up to five minutes to speak to those issues, and then if there were, if there was anybody in opposition, the applicant can come back for rebuttal testimony for up to five minutes, and then one and only one, if there is more than one person in opposition, questions or concerns, will have the opportunity to do the final rebuttal. If we get to that point, we'll guide you through that, especially sometimes there needs to be a bit of conversation if there's more than one individual that was part of that oppositional testimony. And so we close out the public hearing. After that part of things happens, we then engage here as the public meeting and decide, make that determination on the case like I alluded to a little bit ago. You'll see that we have actually six members present here tonight with, let's see, we've got four full-time members and then two alternate members. I'll basically have the alternate members go back and forth on the cases and any other business we have before us. But all members do participate in listening to the cases, asking questions, even discussion. It just ultimately with voting, it'll only be the four full-time members and one alternate. And I'll make sure we state who that alternate is that'll be doing the voting for each case as we go forward. So I think I'll quick do the, a little bit more of the introduction as far as who we are. So again, I'm the Chair of the Zoning Board. We have Mr. JB Boucher, who is our clerk, Mr. Josh Neely, one of our full-time members, Mr. Jay McCarron, our other full-time member, Mr. Andrew Sylvia, one of our alternates, and Mr. Josh Patry, Joseph Patry, sorry, one of our other alternates. And then Mr. Carter Falk, our Deputy Planning Manager for the City of Nashua. So attendance, yeah, just to do an official, official roll call on attendance, Mr. Neely?
Present.
And Mr. Boucher?
Present.
And Mr. McCarron?
Present.
Mr. Sylvia?
Present.
Mr. Patry?
Present.
And Mr. Shaw, I'm present, so we, again, we have six members present here tonight. Just also, just the other minor bit of housekeeping is, if you want to or need to have any conversations in the audience, acoustics are super good in this auditorium, so we ask that you step outside and have that, any conversation out there. And I think that's about it. Is there anything I've overlooked? We don't have any changes to the agenda, right?
No, no changes to the agenda.
Okay. All right. I think with that, we will move right into the cases. What I normally do is just read the descriptive information on the case, and we just kind of go in order as listed, and then whoever is the presenting on the first application, welcome to come up at any point while I'm reading the introduction to case number one. So case number one is owners are the Burton M. and Barbara J. Cohen Living Trust. The address is 3 Whitman Road, Sheet B, Lot 1675. The request is for a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-17, subsection E, subsection 1, to exceed the maximum driveway width where 24 feet is permitted, 36 feet is proposed for a new driveway for a house under construction. This is in the R18 zone, Ward 8. Is somebody here to present on the case for 3 Whitman? Please feel free to come up again to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and tell us about what you're trying to do, and...
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Bert Cohen. I'm currently living at 35 Hillside Drive in Hebron, New Hampshire. My wife, Barbara, and I are building a home on 3 Whitman Road and are seeking a variance to the current curb cut requirement of 24 feet.
Oh, and if, I just, if you want to come up and join him right now and just give testimony together, you're more than welcome to do that. If you want to do it in turns, or not at all, you don't have to come up, but just if you want to, you are welcome to join him. And just if you could state your name and address for the record also.
I'm Barbara Cohen, 35 Hillside Drive, Hebron, New Hampshire.
Thank you.
So a typical two-car garage is about 24 feet wide, so the current ordinance of 24 feet for the curb cut allows straight entry and exit from both garage stalls, making it easy to enter and exit the driveway. We're currently building a three-car garage, which is 36 feet wide, and currently, to comply with the ordinance, we would need to flare the driveway to the actual width of the garage doors. In order to make entering and exiting the driveway safer and easier, we would like to pave the area from the last garage door straight to the street, which would be about 12 feet at its widest point, and I've included a drawing of that area for your review. We believe the value and character of the neighborhood would not be changed as there are multiple homes in a close proximity with three-car garages and a fully paved 36-foot driveway with straight access to the garage doors. I've also included a picture of a few homes in the neighborhood. We've been mindful of the surrounding neighborhood and the construction of our home and do not believe the additional driveway pavement would be contrary to the public interest, alter, or alter the character of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Does the board have any questions? Mr. Sylvia?
21 Spencer Drive is fairly close to the driveway there. Have you heard anything from them in regard to your proposed expansion?
No, I haven't.
Any other questions from the board? All right, seeing none, now you can have a seat. We'll see if there's any other testimony, and go from there. Is there anybody that would like to speak in favor of the 3 Whitman Road request? Seeing none, is there anybody here with questions, concerns, or opposition regarding the driveway at 3 Whitman Road? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Anybody want to offer first thoughts or comments? Mr. Neely?
I'm in favor of this application. It looks to me like the garage in the house is kind of set forward on the, on the lot. I do believe if we did the flare, it would look relatively unnatural. Might be a little, little, a little bit of extra work in the winter to get in and out of that garage. Certainly, as, as we've noted, there's some other houses in the general area that have the same three-car garage, straight, you know, straight pullback, so for those reasons, I'm in favor of this application.
All right, thank you. Anybody else have any initial comments? Mr. Sylvia?
Yep. I'm in favor for this application. I believe the garage looks comparable to other garages in the neighborhood. My main concern was the proximity to the abutting property, but it is within appropriate setbacks, so it's, it seems fine, and the applicant said there was no issues with the neighbor, so I support that.
Mr. McCarron?
I struggled with this one, but I, I do lean in favor primarily because the three-car garage itself is unreasonable. There are other examples in the area, but also because of, I think as Mr. Neely mentioned, if this house were further back, you could accomplish that flare less awkwardly, but because you really can't put the house much farther back, it is really awkward. It would be awkward to park in front of it to come in and out. And also, I always get concerned with these, if it's going to look like a parking lot, but it's really less than a third of the frontage, so it's not going to have that impact. There will still be plenty of lawn and green space, so for those reasons, I support it.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I'll just, I concur as well. I think that's a really good point as far as, you know, the breadth of the lot, and so scale-wise, this, I think that really is, I think, important also, that it won't overwhelm the frontage of the property like it might on a much smaller lot, so, yeah. And I'd also think that the flaring, I mean, that can be very difficult to navigate and even cause other issues, and even lead to things like the grass that gets run over, and it's all near impossible to keep the grass, like, growing, and then you have something that looks worse, but we maintain a width to kind of satisfy the, you know, the code directly. So I think there's enough compelling factors that I think I'm okay with. I had some concerns also, just, especially wider driveways do tend to be, you know, a little bit of a challenge for us many times, but, yeah. So, would somebody like to offer a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Sylvia will vote on this, and then Mr. Patry will vote on the next case, and Mr. Sylvia, the third case. Thank you for that clarification.
I'll do a motion.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance for the Burton M. and Barbara J. Cohen Living Trust owners, 3 Whitman Road, Sheet B, Lot 1675, requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-17, subsection E, subsection 1, to exceed maximum driveway width, 24 feet permitted, 36 feet proposed for a new driveway for a house under construction. This is in the R18 zone in Ward 8. The variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than variance. The board did have discussion on this. We do believe that the new construction home is located relatively forward on the lot, so there's not a whole lot of maneuvering space in a driveway for a third car. This is comparable to other properties, as evidenced in the packet submission by the applicant. We do think that the resulting flare, if we went with the 24-feet foot policy, would make it a bit awkward to get in and out of the driveway. There's potential damage to both the lawn, as well as the garage with that, those turns. And looking at the full property, this is less than one-third of the frontage. We do find that a three-car garage in this area is a reasonable request. This is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. This will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. This is not contrary to public interest, excuse me, and substantial justice would be served.
Is there a second? Mr. McCarron, thank you for the second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? And that passes unanimously, 5-0. So your application obviously has been approved. You're welcome to proceed as intended. This caution, we try to put out on every case, and I didn't mention it at the beginning, but there is a 30-day window appeal. If somebody felt that we made the decision in error illegally, they can appeal, and then it could be possible that the case then could get put on hold while that gets resolved, and you wouldn't be able to do any further action. But for now, there's no indication that that's likely, but it's just, so you know, it is, you know, something that could happen, and you should be aware. If you have any questions, you can certainly contact Mr. Falk also, but just like to make sure applicants understand that, even once you've gotten approval, that this 30-day window appeal does exist, so. Otherwise, good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Have a good night. All right, we'll move on to case number two. The owners are Andrew and Alyssa McQuade. The address is 23 Auburn Street, Sheet 68, Lot 73. The request is for a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-17, subsection E, subsection 1, to exceed maximum driveway width, 24 feet permitted, 23 feet is existing, 49 and a half feet is proposed. This is in the RC zone, Ward 3. Is somebody here to present this application? Please come up to the mic and state your name and address for the record.
So my name is Andrew McQuade. I live at 23 Auburn Street with my wife Alyssa.
Hi, Alyssa McQuade of 23 Auburn Street.
And my name is Dave Terrielton. I'm with Terrielton Sons Paving Contractors.
All right.
So, yeah, so we're here tonight because we would like to extend our, the width of our driveway currently at our home over on Auburn Street. When we purchased it back in 2019, there's a small concrete pad that sits in front of the garage, which is a little bit in a state of disrepair, so we're looking to fix that and replace that concrete where the rebar is all exposed. It's a little bit falling apart with asphalt, so that's going to be the, the method that we're going to use to put the new driveway in for the whole thing. And then to the left, if you're staring at our house on Highland Place, there are two parking spots, one of which is, I guess qualifies as one. It's a concrete slab that the garage used to sit on. It's bordered by a really small granite frame that is where the garage used to sit on years and years ago. It's lifted, moved to the right over by where we have a bunch of grapevines. We're looking to remove the concrete there and to the left of it, where our neighbor, Eric, probably can tell you a little bit more about it, since we weren't obviously there when this was done, but the previous owner, Karen Wolf, when she owned the property, she had a tenant that replaced and laid down a bunch of gravel to the left of the parking spot that my, my, my wife uses currently, which is where I park my car, but it's mostly turned into, like, mud and some grass, and during the wintertime, unfortunately, due to no direct intention, but granite pieces have been known to fly in our vain attempt to try to plow it or remove snow during the wintertime, and they'll find their way over to Eric's house, Eric and Mary Ann, who are our neighbors to our left, if you're staring at the driveway. So we're looking to pave that, and then to the left of that, there's a really small pad of grass that sits in front of our garden shed that we are looking to just, you know, essentially extend it out to the edge of where the shed is to replace it with asphalt. The whole driveway will be bordered in granite to, I think, have it be in keeping with the area, so that we can actually have other people that, when they come and visit us, there's a place to park. You know, at Highland Place, it used to be a throughway, I think at one corner or another, that you could go in sort of a horseshoe from one end of Highland Street in and then around through the other end of Highland Street, through Highland Place, but that's since been, I think, removed. The owners that live at the end of that have a gate there, so snow removal can be a bit of a challenge, obviously for us during the wintertime. It's very hard for us to put things there and obviously plow a majority of the, I guess, driveway that does, you know, air quotes kind of exist currently. It's a really tight and narrow road, so, you know, one of the things that we were, I feel like cognizant of is that Highland Street is, it's a really small, older part of town, so we don't want to end up having to park our cars or having other people park their cars on Highland Street or consequently Auburn Street, which is, I think, a majority of multifamily rentals, which most of the folks there end up parking on the street anyways with parking passes, so, you know, we don't want to be moving our car, a car down there and taking a spot away from the tenants down there, which there really aren't any driveways there for a lot of those folks that are on Auburn Street, so trying to be a little cognizant of that, and also just not clog up Highland Street, which I think is different, different challenge, but it's a very busy street. People, you know, tend to fly up or down that street, and, you know, there's a lot of little kids that live on that street, so we're trying not to have a car, you know, an extra car sitting out there. Alyssa's parents, my in-laws, are also a little bit older. My mother-in-law is disabled, so it's really hard for her, and I do not expect anybody, regardless of their level of fitness, to park on, on Auburn Street, where we have a very nice set of granite steps to go all the way up, but it's like, you know, the Mount Everest of Nashua, walking up that. And I feel like it's in keeping with most of the other homes that are in the area. The only real exception to it is Eric and Mary Ann's house, which, you know, they have, I think, space for two cars, but our neighbors across from us, they have space for three. He has a, I think, a two-car garage, I guess you would call it. We could park our car, I guess, in, you know, the, I don't even know if I, certainly structure-wise, it qualifies as one, but it's more like a carriage house. I would have a hard time fitting my car in there, and I, you know, I don't drive anything big. I drive a little all-track. And our neighbor next to us that used to be, I forget what ship's address used to be, but...
Oh, yeah, 25 Auburn.
Yeah, he's since changed it. When he asked the city to change his address to, I think, something Highland Place, but he has a driveway that is enough for at least three cars, and then he's got a garage, the only one I've ever seen that's just built in the city into the side of a, you know, the hill there, but we're not asking to do that, so, yeah, it's really our pitch.
Do you want to add anything, or? Yeah, if you guys have any specific questions, we wanted to make sure that our contractor was here, so that if you have any questions on the scope of the project or what our intentions are, he can answer those questions. But we appreciate you guys, you know, the board, listening to our request.
Okay, thank you. Does the board have any questions? Mr. Sylvia?
Just to confirm from what I was looking at in the pictures here, is the gravel going to go all the way to the property line, or just, will there be some grass in between your...
Yeah, so I was just talking to Eric about that. I thought I sent him a text message along with our other neighbors, but I just came back from a deployment with the Army like six months ago, and I had like three different phone numbers from like a myriad of different Middle Eastern countries when I was over there. I worked for the Army full-time. I'm a New Hampshire National Guardsman. I work in Concord. I'm a full-time person. Yes, to answer your question, there is going to be a pretty wide strip of grass that separates the two pieces of property. We only want to extend it out to the edge of the, like, little garden shed that's there currently. And having looked at it, I think even just the other day, there's a little granite marker that sits there. There's going to be plenty of space between those. Where the driveway is going to start with asphalt, and then bordered with granite, and obviously Eric's property, Eric and Mary Ann's property.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? I had a couple.
Yes, sir.
So we're basically in between the garage slash carriage house and the shed, in that area, where I think you're mostly parking right now. It's hard to tell, is it possible to actually park two cars deep, or is it more like one and a half-ish, or one and three-quarter?
So you're talking about, like, if we were to pull in?
Just like end-to-end, like, could you?
Oh, no.
Okay.
I mean, sure. I think, so the reason why we chose to widen it, and we also chose to reduce the depth of the existing driveway, because there's a really nice set of, there's a brick pathway that whoever put it in there, we're not trying to change that. We're actually trying to improve the, the green space and a little bit of, like, trim, like I said, that's going to border the whole driveway in granite. We're going to reuse all the stuff that's there, that was where the original garage was on, the foundation. And there's these massive pieces of granite that I'm not really sure what the architectural intention was of that, but there's a whole bunch of them that sit right in front of our bulkhead, which I wouldn't ask anybody to try to move those. We had granite steps installed a few years ago, and we had to have a crane come in and literally, like, lift it over the house, which was a little, little disturbing, but, yeah, we're not trying to change the, the front, that side of the house. We're trying to increase the green space, to be honest with you, by a bit. I would say maybe like a foot and a half to two feet. And, yeah, there's really no way for us to park two cars like, like this, is what I think what you're asking.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, no, I don't think so.
Basically trying to get at, is that, is that area, would that area functionally work to park four, up to four cars, and you're saying no, two is really kind of the maximum just because of the depth, and that's, that's...
Yeah, I mean, I work in the Army, so if you told me to, like, you must park four cars here, I would make sure...
Well, I'm sure you, yeah, yeah. There's ways to do stuff like that.
Yeah, but like...
Like three inches in between vehicles or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, we wanted to make sure that whatever the design was, that it was in keeping with the character of the house, because it is an older home. It was built in 1898. We've worked, I think, pretty hard to keep it up. I wouldn't wish anybody, on anybody here, to replace cedar shakes on the side of their house. I've done that before, but that, that was the whole intention. Make something that is in keeping with the neighborhood, that, you know, doesn't take away from other residents in the area where I think parking is already a bit of a challenge, and do it with intention, so...
All right.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I got.
Anything else? Otherwise, I think we're all set. You can have a seat.
Yes, sir. Thank you all for your time. I appreciate it.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor of the 23 Auburn Street application? Anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to 23 Auburn Street?
I have a question.
You need to come up to the mic if you, yeah, to, so state your name and address for the record, and then ask your question.
My name is Eric McNamara. My address is 2 Highland Street. I'm the next-door neighbors. And so my only question is, my driveway is probably within three or four feet of the property line. The property line is a little bit, so I just, I just question where the edge of the driveway is going to be. Is it, and what's a normal setback?
Well, there's, actually, Mr. Falk.
Actually, there is no setback, no side yard setback for a driveway. You could go right up to a property line.
Okay.
There's no setback.
Okay.
Thanks.
Sure, sure. You're welcome to come back up if you want to respond to his question.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Sure.
So, like I said...
Wait, wait, wait. Come to the mics, name and address again, unfortunately, just...
Yes, sir, yeah. Andrew McQuade, 23 Auburn Street, here in Nashua. So, yeah, Eric, to answer your question, the intention is to not destroy the green space, which we love. The, the house has a lot of fun, plant growth and plants and flowers and trees that are already there. We lost a bit of a battle with the utility company with one of the trees there that they had to cut down near one of the poles, so do apologize for that. But, yeah, the... But, yeah, the intention is to only extend it out to the edge of the little like garden shed that we have there. We're not trying to go further than that because I do think it, you know, I'm partial to it looking in keeping with the spirit of the, you know, the neighborhood and, you know, I'm happy to keep mowing that little tiny spot, like, that's all good. So, yeah, it's not going to extend past the shed. The intention is really there for us to have a space where Alyssa's parents, my in-laws, friends, if they do visit, you know, that, I mean, I, I think it looks a little janky when we have people come over and you've got your car kind of like not parked on a flat spot, it's not completely flat, so it's like kind of tilted a little bit, and in the winter time, springtime, it becomes like essentially like a big mud pit, which, trying to avoid that and also I, like, Mary Ann, my neighbor, has a really nice new Bronco and I'm not trying to use my insurance policy to, auto insurance policy to replace windows when I unintentionally have shot little granite rocks out of the, you know, snow removal, snowplow, so, yes. Things you learn in homeownership, not intentional of course, but yeah, that's the other thing too. Snow removal is a big thing for that piece of property. I'm not always around because of the nature of my job, so this past year was a, probably a pain for her to try to remove snow, so that's the other thing too, is it's a pain for us to remove it because you can't really plow it, you can shovel it, but, yeah. Sorry, long, long answer.
Yeah, it's fine, yeah.
But I hope that answers your question, Eric. Okay.
And just kind of an aside, my condolences for your interaction with the utility company, but no surprise on the outcome.
Yes, they were really great to deal with, I'm joking, so, yes, thank you.
All right, thank you. Now, we'll close the public hearing there and open the public meeting. Anybody have comments? Mr. Boucher.
So, I, I'm in favor of the, the application for the following reasons. Again, looking at the neighborhood itself, looking at the parking, having gone there different times a day on the weekend, so I, I see exactly what's going on there and down the street from there, you know, so I, I understand what the, what the applicant's saying about where to park. So, I never really, really looked at that Highland Place before, so I, I found it interesting and this is what really is, is in my mind, a couple of things. Really, there is only access to basically one, two, three, four, four residences, one, there's a gate there if you're in there. And, and as I look, really this, I, I look at it really as just maybe, you know, the impact is, is really, I don't call it hidden, but it's really centralized right to, right to this place here. This, this is not a true, a through traffic street. The only people that are going down the street are the people who live there. I also recognize that at, is across the street there, in the back there, 4-4 and a half, I mean, that's kind of very unique because that garage is practically, you know, just a few feet from the street and they're literally parking kind of, the rear end of the cars are in the street. So, what I'm saying that to that is that obviously they've made that work. So, I don't see any detriment or negative effect of widening this driveway to the left-side edge of that, of that shed to give that homeowner the, the, the ask that they're looking for. I think it's reasonable. Again, this is not on a main street, this is not affecting traffic flow, I don't think there's any safety issues, so I, I think it's a reasonable request.
Mr. McCarry.
So, so full disclosure, I, I knew the prior owners of the property and I knew the owners before that, so I, I've been to this house many, many times. I've climbed those front steps and I can definitely attest that that is not the way that you want to go. So, parking down on Auburn Street is really not an option. And realistically, that small little area in front of the garage, that's, there's no parking available there, so you have to be able to get in and out. And given the position of the house, because of the hill, as far back as it is, there's just realistically no other place to park. The overage does seem great, but the reality is, is that people have been parking on the grass there, former residents, guests, I've parked there, there's really just no other realistic option.
Thank you. Mr. Sylvia.
Yeah, my, my only concern was the grass and that was resolved. As, as here on the board, I don't know if you guys know this, but variance is wrong with the property, so it seems like Andrew and Eric are good neighbors right now, but in the future, somebody might move in and one of the property owners might park on the wrong side of the lot line if the driveway went all the way to the edge, so I'm glad that you're keeping the grass there, I think that'll prevent that.
Any comments?
The other thing is, I, I was going to just say, in some ways, Highland Place almost, it almost functions like a common driveway to these properties, or like, I was thinking like, we're like a dead-end alley, but it's, it's that sense, it's not really functioning as a through street, it's a feeder to a bunch of parking spaces, there's actually quite a bit of asphalt on the other side from them. And so, yeah, I, I mean, I was, you know, the, the number was, you know, we were talking about it and even mentioned in the last case about, but this, this is why we hear cases like this, that's very specific and compelling reasons and circumstantially, I think it does make sense here, even though it seems like a huge overage and so, for, I guess for some of those reasons and some of what else has been stated, I am in support. If there's no other commentary, would anybody like to make a motion?
Mr. McCarry, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that the application of Andrew and Alyssa McQuaid, 23 Auburn Street, requesting a variance from land use code section 190-17 E1 to exceed the maximum driveway width, 24 feet permitted, 23 feet existing, 49.6 feet proposed, be approved. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and that the benefits of the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. We find that given the grade in front of the house, how far the house is up the hill, that parking in front of the house is a realistic option. And then given the position of the house on the property, there's just a very, very limited room to the rear on Highland Street to park. We also note that Highland Street is not a through street, it's a very small street, almost like a, a service street, and so the overage is less visible and that there are other surrounding properties on Highland Street which do appear to exceed the driveway widths as well. We find that it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance, allowing reasonable use of the property, in fact, really, the ability to park two or three cars, that it will not adversely affect property values of surrounding parcels, that it's not contrary to the public interest and that substantial justice would be done.
Second to the motion, Mr. Patrick, thank you. The only thing, just for clarification, you were saying Highland Street when I think you meant Highland Place.
Highland Place, I'm sorry.
Just for the, for the record, just to make that clear.
Thank you.
Is there any discussion on the motion? And again, this, Mr. Patrick, we are voting the alternate member for this case. If not, all in favor? That passes unanimously, five-zero. Similar guidances to the last case, there is a 30-day window of appeal, but you're more than welcome to proceed with this approval. If you have questions, you can certainly contact Mr. Ball. Good luck with your project. All right, and we will move to the third and final case of the night. The owner is Ruby Lane Ventures LLC, the address is 115 Lock Street, Sheet 41, Lot 21. The request is for variance from land use code section 190-16, section E subsection 2 subsection 9, A and B, to allow seven decks approximately nine to 10 feet in height to encroach six feet into the 10-foot required side yard setback. This is in the GI zone, Ward 3, and welcome, Attorney Prohm.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. My name is Andy Prohman, attorney with Pruney and Prohman here in Nashua. Mr. Chairman and members, we have an application in the court for seven decks to encroach into the setback and we, I'm amending our application tonight to reduce that down to four decks and adding in a fence along our property line, and I'll explain how we got there. Mr. Chairman, I represent Ruby Lane Ventures, owner of 115 Lock Street. Ruby Lane Ventures is owned by the LaFever family, who have been doing development work recently on Lock Street. They've been doing work on 93 Lock Street, they built five units right next door, they have 113 and 115 Lock Street, they have completed building out 18 units at that site. I was recently before you to have moved Wally's office from where they are on 25 Progress over to East Hall Street, so they, they are before the town. 115 Lock Street is in the General Industrial District. We were here before you in April 2023 to permit the multifamily, which is not permitted in the General Industrial District. Originally, we proposed eight units, we had some back and forth with the board, we ended up with the seven units that are, that we're talking about tonight. Those seven units were intentionally laid out the way they laid out so we could preserve a row of trees in between 113 and 115 Lock Street, which is, if you've been by the site, you can see that those trees are, been preserved and they're in full bloom and they're, they're doing what they're supposed to do. November 2023, the planning board approved the site plan for the seven units and over the course of that time and over the course of the build-out of the 113, 111, 113, 18 units, the, those units were, had decks originally planned and as it turns out, the buyers of those units and the LaFever family realized that that's a much, much appreciated, much liked amenity, and so while those decks were not included with this particular project, they're making the request tonight and as a result, the request encroaches into the side yard setback. The decks themselves will be off the kitchen and the living rooms and they really, they really will add, they're really good amenity and add value to the, to the home buyers. The decks encroach into the side yard setback. We have, in this district, General Industrial District, we have a 10-foot side yard setback, but then also our ordinance allows encroach, decks to encroach up to five feet into that 10-yard setback as long as they're below four feet in height. And I have copies of that particular ordinance if you, if you, if you want it, if you need it, I have extra copies here. What we're proposing are decks that will, that are, will be six feet in, in depth and which will amount to a one foot beyond the five foot that's allowed encroachment into the, into the side yard setback. The decks are going to be at the first floor level off the kitchen or off the living room, so they're going to be approximately nine, nine to 10 feet high. So I have, our request is really for encroaching one additional foot that's otherwise allowed into the side yard setback and going up nine to 10 feet off of the, what's it, the four foot that's allowed, right? Now, we received an email today from our immediate neighbor at 117 Lock. Ms. Munia is here tonight and we saw that email and the LaFever's are doing a fair amount of development work in Nashua, they want to remain good neighbors and so Ms. Munia and I talked earlier tonight and we have agreed to remove the first three decks from units one, two, and three, because those are the closest to her, to her property. So those, and this is where I'm amending the application, we're removing those three decks and we are proposing to install a six-foot stockade privacy fence from the right-of-way to the back of the garage. Carter handed out a little of my markup earlier, my, my heavy line along that property line is intended to be a six-foot stockade fence. It stops on, on halfway on the, on the side of the garage and we will agree to continue that to the back of the garage. Ms. Munia just called that out to me a couple minutes ago and that's fine with us. Questions before I get into the criteria?
Okay, Mr. Munia.
Because the, the ordinance is a little confusing.
Yeah, no, so, so thanks for doing that. I remember this case the first two times we talked about this. You, you took a pretty good beating on those, and so, so I am glad you, you just came to this, this change here. Quite frankly, that's what I was going to ask, you know, we, I actually pulled the notes from the last time we met and the other abutter of the larger complex there, I think he had two major concerns and one of which you relayed immediately saying, hey, we're just doing patios, there'll be no decks. I mean, you look at the other, the other development next door, they all have decks, they all look great, and so I'm not surprised we're, we're trying to do this here.
Yeah.
But, but at what point did they come back to you and said, hey, we just want to go with decks instead of patios? I mean, you, you were adamant, we're just doing patios.
They, this just, honestly, this came to me, I don't know, say a month or so ago, and it's, it's really as a result of the success they've had with their project right next door, they've heard back from their buyers, they, they know the people like the deck, they like the decks off the kitchen, rather than, you know, schlep your hot dogs down to the patio to grill them, right, they prefer to have it right off the, right off the kitchen. So that's really, you know, originally, Tom Zajak from Hainer Swanson, we were going over with, with them, it's a very tight lot, skinny lot, you can only get so much, so they said, well, let's, let's ask. Because, and frankly, I kind of liked removing those first three decks because the back four, first of all, they're hidden behind Ms. Munia's garage, and secondly, they, they're on top of a, not a huge field, but a kind of grassy area of the neighbor's property, so we're not right on top of anyone with those decks. But the LaFever's, you know, they want to have a good product, they want to have a, keep their buyers happy and they, they thought this would be a good, a fair request.
Yeah, Mr. McCarry.
So, will you be putting patios in for the other three?
There will be seven patios, the patio's not changing.
Okay.
Because that's just a, that's just like a door out back, on the back of the storage area, the back of the garage.
Okay.
So with that, Mr. Chairman, I really have the, the variance criteria, which you have in our packet, with respect to the four decks for units four, five, six, and seven, and with the addition of this privacy fence, we believe that we are not contrary to the public interest. We're not, you know, setbacks are really intended not to overcrowd, not to encroach upon your neighbors, and we think we have addressed that with the changes that we're making here tonight. I believe, we believe that we're in the spirit of the ordinance, again, we have a very thin lot, it's an oversized lot going back to the Nashville River, but it's very thin, 70-some-odd feet wide, so between the drive aisle, the parking spaces, and the depth of the buildings, we really don't have a lot of room to work with. The encroaching, the encroachment of the decks is, it's really, it's a, it's a foot over what's allowed, it's a five or six feet higher than what's allowed, we think it's a reasonable request in the spirit of the ordinance. We think substantial justice is being done, both for the applicant and with the changes that we're making tonight for Ms. Munia, we believe that we, providing substantial justice with no adverse impact to the city. We don't see, again, with the changes made tonight, we don't see any impact to property values and given that the width of the lot, the thin nature of the lot, and the use of decks for residential condos, we think we have a reasonable request presented to the board.
All right.
Thank you, happy to answer any questions, I'm happy to sit down.
Any other questions from the board? I think we're all set, thank you.
Thank you.
So, Ms. Munia, you're the only one else in the audience, do you wish to provide any testimony? We do have your email from earlier, it seems, but if you want to just come up and say anything, you're welcome to, you don't have to. It's always, just, but if you could state your name and address for the record, that'd be great. You could lower the mic a little bit.
Hi, my name is Mary Munia, my address is 117 Rock Street, National Hampshire. Yes, I did agree to the decks, the first, but now the last, the, the decks that he agreed to remove, that's okay, but now there's a deck, that's, he said four decks, but one of those decks is on top of the garage, so there's a concern there. So, you can, you can amend that, because if you look at the map, I was looking at the map, one of the decks is just like above the garage, it would almost be touching the garage.
Be addressing us in the middle, isn't that right? Yeah. Well, Attorney Prohm, you can come back up after you, so, and then you can come back one more time if you need to, so.
Okay.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, again, Andy Prohman, Pruney and Prohman. Well, we would like to keep that deck, we think that while it's close to the garage, we don't think it would impact the living quarters of the house, we don't think it would impact... We don't think it would impact the neighbors, either Ms. Munia's property or the apartment buildings next door. So we would like to keep that if possible. If it's a deal breaker, we'll get rid of it.
Is that one unit number four?
Yes.
Mr. Boucher?
So just to clarify, and I, and you know, I read the letter from, from Ms. Muniz. Again, it appears close, but the deck is going to be at least four feet from the property line. And then the garage, I'm not sure if it's right on the property line or it's close.
Two more feet.
Yeah, two more feet. And the deck is, what's the total size of that deck on number four? Would you know, just roughly, just so we have a perspective?
Nine foot by six feet.
Nine by six, okay. So just, yeah, just a little bit bigger than a sheet of plywood, four by a piece of plywood. I'm just reading perspective wise. So the snow that would come off that deck, and again, from my perspective and from what I understand from you, that deck really doesn't go to property line. It's not overhanging that garage. And if there's any snow removal, obviously, good neighbors don't throw snow into the other person's yard or on top of a roof. But I'm assuming that snow removal will just be pushed off the deck down on the property line, you know, within their property. So I don't, I'm just trying to, you know, understand if there was anything special about that deck other than what I understand.
No, 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 no.
Hang on, you can talk again, that's okay. Well, you know, if I'm, I, I live in a condo with a deck that I throw the snow right off in my backyard. I get a good backyard, so it doesn't impact anyone. I would expect these folks to do the same. If it's a concern, we can extend the fence down a little further so it matches the line with units four and five, right? But I think there's enough room there. You know, I don't think people are throwing snow, really just pushing it off the side.
Okay.
Thank you.
If, if the garage is the key concern, it looks like number four is closer to the garage than number one. Why did you amend, amend it to get rid of number one instead of number four?
Well, because I thought the garage provided a buffer from Ms. Munia's house.
Okay.
All right, so if I'm sitting out in the garage, you know, I won't be looking in her, in her house. I won't be looking in the second floor of the bedroom. Likewise, I won't be looking back at the garage. I thought the garage really acted as a buffer.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay.
We're good?
Thank you.
And you're welcome to come back up. Mr. Attorney Pro won't be able to respond to any more questions. We can try to answer, but, so it's really just your chance to say if, you know, how you feel about things or if you have any further comments.
Yeah, so he just agreed that they can, the fence can cover all the way so that, because there's really no place to, if it snows, there's really no place for snow to go, even for them, the owners of the deck. They'll have trouble because it will be above the garage. So they will have no way, there's nowhere for them to throw down the snow. That's what I'm saying.
So the, I mean, my, the way I read the plan though is that, 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 that deck that, the first one that's going to be there, the edge, the edge of it is almost perfectly in line with the back of your garage. So it's almost like they're, like a kind of meeting at the diagonal or at the point. They're not really overlapping other than, you know, maybe by a foot or so. It's, it's very close to, you know, almost like the garage ends and then the deck begins.
Yes.
So, and Attorney Pro noted, yeah, they could just run the fence down past the decks for units four and five. You know, I think some reality is that if somebody wants to throw snow off of a deck, you know, and it's only four feet from the property line, they can go past the fence or not or, but again, that's just not, it's not, that's not being a good neighbor and it really wouldn't be appropriate regardless. And, and it's, you know, some, somebody could do that with a snow blower in the driveway, you know, you can only stop so much, you know, but.
Like you said, before, there was no plan for them to put those decks they are now putting. So it, the building was almost fresh.
Make sure you stay close enough to the mic, sorry. Because otherwise we don't get the recording.
Sorry. So there was no space between, it was up to where it should be. So there was no space in between. That's why the trouble, because it's almost fresh to the, to the property line. But if there's a fence, that's okay.
Okay, all right, thank you. Let me make sure the board doesn't, anybody have any other question? Okay, you're, you can have a seat. All right, so that closes out the public hearing and we will open the public meeting. Anybody have further comments?
Yeah, I'll, I'll take it. So, so coming in, I did have some concerns. For, for the newer members, this was quite a bit of give and take over multiple, multiple sessions. And it started out with, with quite a few concerns, got down to two concerns, one of which was, we're not going to have decks and we're going to go with patios instead. I don't, I don't like returns usually for these, these type of requests. However, one of the things that I was thinking as I was sitting there on a, on a site visit the other day is, boy, if I got rid of those first three decks, I think it would take care of a lot of the issues there. So I, you know, Attorney Pro does a great job, got ahead of me on that one. I love that fact. I am going to be in favor of this with, with some special conditions as we, we've talked about. I do believe most townhouses, you're going, or condos, you're going, going to want to have a deck. You just do in this area. And so it is reasonable to do that. I, I get it, you don't want it out of the patio for those other ones. Totally understand. So I think it is reasonable for that, that type of thing to happen. As we know, this, these units are looking exactly like the, the two sets of units, you know, to the, to the three o'clock of where they are. And they look like very good units. I, I have, I don't believe this is going to adversely affect the property values. We don't have anything from any, any Realtor saying otherwise. So I do think, and I continue to think this is a good use of the area. I do applaud these folks for working with the neighbors, both with tonight and, and previous. There's quite a few things that we worked through. So I, I am in favor of this with the, the special stipulations of the units four to seven only and a six-foot fence to the rear of the garage.
Any comments, Mr. Boucher?
I'm also in favor of, of the application with the, with, with the changes. I think it's reasonable. I, I think that there's, Mrs. Muniz has had some valid concerns, but I believe that deck number four is going to be okay where it is. I don't think there's going to be an issue there. I think, again, there's still four to six feet to the garage. And then, you know, again, as you spoke before, we can't control what people do with their neighbors. I'm just assuming that this is not going to be that situation. Drifting snow is nothing we can control. If the, if the snow, the wind's going to blow right or whatever, it could, you know, come off the roof of that, that, that condo and vice versa, you know, the other way too. So, and again, the two stipulations with the, the fence, which I think the applicant said would go to the end of number five, the fence there, and then no decks on the first three, I'm, I'm good with that.
Anybody else have comment? Probably have similar feelings.
Exactly.
I pretty much echo what, what you guys just said. So this case, Mr. Sylvia will be our voting member. Would somebody like to offer a motion? Mr. Sylvia?
Okay. In the case of Ruby Lane Ventures LLC, owner 115 Locke Street, Sheet 41, Lot 21, requesting a variance from land use code section 190-16E29A and B to allow seven decks approximately nine to 10 feet in height to encroach six feet into the 10-foot required side yard setback, GI zone, Ward 3. I believe a variance is needed to enable the applicant's prop, proposed use of the property given the special conditions of the property and the benefits offered by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than variance, given the skinny size of the lot. It's within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. It will not affect the property values of the surrounding parcels following the compromise that was made with the butter. It's not contrary to the public interest and substantial justice will be done. And I oppose the special conditions that the decks only be allowed on units four, five, six, and seven. Oh, and, and the six-foot stockade going to the edge of unit number five's deck.
Yeah, okay. Second on that motion, Mr. Neely? Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Okay, that passes unanimously. We have the drill with the 30-day window of appeal and that closes out case number three. Good luck with the project and thank you for working with the neighbor. And I hope that works out well for everybody. All right. We. JP, a second? No. We have the next, we have the next agenda for the October 8th meeting. There are six cases. I know I did not see any regional impact. Did anybody else have any concerns of regional impact? I think the board agrees, no regional impact. We do have minutes from the September 11th meeting. Has everybody reviewed and is there any additions, corrections, comments that we need to account for? Otherwise, would somebody be willing to make a motion? And Mr. Patrick will be the voting member of this case.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
And seconded by Mr. Patrick. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
I'm going to abstain.
And Mr. McCarry, abstaining, so it passes four zero. And I think that is it unless somebody has other business for us. We move to adjourn and we are at 7:31. Just crossed it to the second hour. Good night, all.